Let's call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion to support the community. Fill us with grace as we make decisions. Let us remember that all we accomplish is for your greater glory. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Stephan. And welcome, everybody. Welcome to the regular October meeting of the Independent City Council. I looked at our agenda last week, and I did not realize it was so fascinating to bring everybody out, but we are thrilled to have you all here. Always happy to have our strong law enforcement and fire service out here. I'm going to guess you're all going to leave me as soon as we're finished with our stuff, but I've grown accustomed to that. It's okay.
We'll stay there. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So would Jeanne and I.
All right. Well, we will go to get to the business, and quickly, we've got to dispense with a few things. First of all is we need to decide if we have enough people here for a meeting. Madam Clerk, if you would be so kind.
Mr. Brinker.
Yeah, here.
Mr. Fowler.
Here.
Mrs. Franzen.
Here.
Mr. Stephan.
Here.
Mr. Vogelpohl.
Here.
Mr. Waite.
Here.
All right. Sounds like all are present accounted for. We do have a quorum, so we will continue. Next item of business is approval of the council meetings for our regular meeting of September 8th. Has council had the opportunity to review the minutes? Any questions, concerns, or potential corrections? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve council meeting minutes of September 8th, 2025.
Second. Got a motion from Councilmember Vogelpohl, second from Councilmember Waite. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Obstained.
Okay. That motion carries, 5-0 with one abstention. All right. Next item is the minutes of our special meeting of September the 15th. Council had the opportunity to review the minutes. There are no questions, concerns, or corrections. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes of September 15th, 2025.
I'll second.
And motion for Councilmember Franzen, second from Councilmember Brinker. Any additional discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Before we get down to the business of the evening, we've got a couple of things that we want to do. The first one is the presentation of a life-saving warrant as well as a proclamation from the City of Independence. I am going to start with the proclamation, and then I'll come down and we'll do the presentations. This is a proclamation of the City of Independence, Kentucky. Whereas the Mayor of Independence has the honor and privilege to recognize occasions of outstanding significance on behalf of the Independent City Council and residents of our area, and extend congratulations to all. And whereas Independence, Kentucky is a community that appreciates and respects local and national heroes such as firefighters, police officers, active military, and retired military veterans. And whereas the city particularly recognizes and appreciates the heroic efforts of the men and women that serve and protect the areas where our families live, work, and play. And whereas on July 25th, 2025, in the City of Independence, a medical emergency arose. And whereas a far greater tragedy was averted because of the quick action of members of the Kenton County Dispatch, the Independence Police Department, and the Independence Fire District, including dispatcher Lena Hargit, Officer Nathan Beikman, Officer Whitney Berger, Officer Hunter Ransdale, Sergeant Joshua Sawyers, firefighter/paramedic Mason O'Brien, Captain Kenny Harney, Captain Brian Stroll, firefighter/EMT Bryson Reese Camp, and firefighter/EMT Doug Stewart. And whereas the dispatcher provided timely and accurate CPR instructions over the phone guiding and supporting the caller until the first responders arrived. Upon arrival, officers immediately initiated life-saving CPR efforts continuing until fire and EMS personnel took over. Fire and EMS utilized a Lucas device administered the medications to give the individual the best possible chance of survival. Additional officers assisted by gathering the victim's personal and medical information carrying EMS equipment and relaying critical details necessary for accurate treatment. Now therefore, I, Christopher J. Reiner, has been Mayor of Independence on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Independence publicly recognize and extend our sincere and heartfelt gratitude to these individuals for their heroic efforts, incredible skill, and extraordinary compassion displayed during the exemplary execution of their duties on that day. (applause) Director, did you have something that you wanted to present? Right?
So, this is a new program that we started within the fire district where we are best when we have, when we are encountered with a situation such as we faced back in July, when it, the odds turn, or when the outcome turns out to be everything that we worked toward, we want to create as much of a reunion and recognition for all the people that are involved as well. We've started a challenge coin program essentially is what we're doing on our behalf, and I'm going to present these challenge coins to everybody, including the survivor who happens to be here tonight. I don't want to draw too terribly much attention to her, but she's radiating over here. So, thank you all so much. I couldn't be more proud of every one of you all. Thank you all. And if nothing else, allow this to be a perfect example of CPR works. CPR is important, and everyone needs to know how to do it. Thank you, guys. (applause)
All right. Anybody else want any pictures before we move on? Hold on. All right. Everybody with it. Officer, bike. Take a seat. Obviously, the amazing work of every individual that was up here is very much appreciated. But there was one, one first responder in particular that deserves particular recognition. This is Officer Nathan Beikman. Proud member of the fire district. So, on July 25th, Officer Beikman responded to a medical emergency that we discussed earlier. Upon arrival, he quickly determined the individual was in cardiac arrest. Officer Beikman immediately began to administer life-saving CPR until members of the Independence Fire District arrived and continued advanced medical care. Thanks to Officer Beikman's swift actions, professionalism, and training, the individual was given the best possible chance of survival in recognition of his heroic efforts that day. Officer Nathan Beikman is being awarded the Life Saving Medal by the American Police Hall of Fame. Also, a huge thank you to all of our first responders and families that showed up to support their brothers and sisters. This is always a spectacular show. Thank you, guys. All right, folks, I guess it's time to get down to business. Before we get started on our business of the evening, we're going to take the opportunity to introduce our new Executive Director for Planning Development Services of Northern Kentucky. I'm excited to introduce Josh Weiss. As you all know, I've been the Board Chair at PDS for a few years now. I've had the opportunity to work with Director Weiss in his role, in his role as Community Development Director/Manager, and was very happy when we made the decision to promote him to Executive Director when Charmelie Reddy moved on to take the City Manager job at the City of Covington. Those of us, all of us who have worked with Charmelie knew that was, it was quite a loss, but fortunately, there was a very able person to step in. And Director Weiss, I'm sorry that you have to follow that, but you've been in government long enough. You know how it goes.
I thought I would have an audience for my 45-minute planning and development presentation.
Make a motion, will you, John?
The mayor knows I like quick meetings, so I'm going to take like two or three minutes.
I'll say you're not like the mayor.
No, he's my boss right now, so. One of my bosses. Well, good evening, council members. As the mayor said, I am Josh Weiss, honored to serve as the new Executive Director for Planning and Development Services. I just appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to either introduce myself or reintroduce myself to some of you that I've worked with over the years, making my rounds. I was telling Nathan slowly but surely to the 19 cities, to all the city council meetings that I like to meet on like the first and second Monday of, so it's going to take me probably until January to get to all those meetings. But anyways, just appreciate the opportunity. A bit about my background, the mayor mentioned that I joined PDS about four years ago to help launch the new community development initiative. I grew up mainly in Edgewood. My parents and my sister and nieces are still in Edgewood. For the past several years, I've lived off Richardson Road in Erlanger, just on the other side of Richardson from Independence, and a parishioner at St. Pius. I attended Kenton County Schools, graduated from Scott High School, so, and then went on and did some college at Thomas More and NKU. So, if you can read between the lines and all that, Kenton County is my home, and I absolutely love it and want to make sure that we make it better for the generations to come. And just as you know, at PDS, we manage several key functions on behalf of our cities, including planning and zoning, infrastructure engineering, building inspections, GIS, community development, and code enforcement. And then we also support the Kenton County Planning Commission, the Link GIS Partnership, and the Joint County Board of Adjustment, and the Joint County Code Enforcement Board. And I truly do view what we do at PDS as an extension of all of the city's teams that we work on behalf of and carry out that vision and the policy direction set by the mayor and city councils in all of our cities. So, we have to be a little flexible. We work with each city in a different way, and I think that's what makes Kenton County unique. For those of you who do already know me, you know that I'm open, I'm collaborative, and I, I don't like long meetings, and I like to get things done. So, I do not plan for any of that to change in my new role, and just know that I am a call or text away. The mayor or Chris have all of my information. Feel free to share it with anyone at any time with any questions. And I know you all have very unique schedules between professional jobs and families and serving your city on top of that, so we can also be flexible if we ever need to meet to work around your schedule. So, with that, Mayor, I did not run the 45-minute presentation, but no, truly, just glad to be here tonight to say hi to everyone, and I look forward to working with all of you.
I will add a couple of things. Director Weiss was humble when he just glossed over his education. I could call him Director Weiss or Doctor Weiss. Has his PhD recent, I'm with, I was, I was at the, two years, maybe?
Past couple of years, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, continues to move forward.
It was a 10-year endeavor, you know.
Yeah. Well, but you achieved it, which a lot of us can't say that. And I'll tell a quick story of when, when I was, I had the pleasure, I was not director, I was the Vice Chair at that time of Planning Development Services, but Kenton County Commissioner Neenaber, who was Chair at the time, was out of town, and we were interviewing for this community development position that we had created. It was a very unique position. I won't get into the weeds and all of that, but we, we had high hopes for it, but we didn't know exactly how we wanted, we needed somebody in that role that could show us how effective it could be. So, Charmelie Reddy and I were interviewing applicants, and we got Director Weiss's application, and we both kind of did a double take. She called me and said, Josh Weiss has applied for this position. So, it's, because he also glossed over his pretty impressive resume. He was, I don't know, Florence doesn't call it city administrator, city coordinator?
City coordinator.
Yeah. He was city coordinator for the city of Florence for several years. Reddy Cincinnati, big economic development agency among other things. So, he's, he's got some pretty impressive credentials, and I can tell you, working with him in his community development manager role over the last few years, we have seen the benefits that here in Independence, as have other cities. I mean, he's, he's got a pretty, pretty wide breadth on, on economic development issues and understands how cities function and appreciates that, which is, which is huge when we're trying to do what we do. So, I am very excited again to have him here, and welcome, and.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
As a fellow Scott alum.
Ah.
I think I'm probably older than.
I knew I liked you, so.
What's your brother's name?
Sister Sarah.
You don't have a brother?
No, I don't have a brother.
Can I ask what year you graduated?
I was going to ask you, but that would.
I'll say at 89.
96.
Okay, so I'm significantly older.
You probably graduated with my, one of my best friends, then, so, yeah. Good, yeah, good school.
Yeah, I agree.
Fly, eagle, fly.
Sometimes crash and burn.
All right. Moving on, we do have one item of old business. This is ordinance number 2025-0-14. This is a revision to our employee pay classification that we discussed at our last meeting, and basically, we are adding the role of Parks and Recreation Director to our table. Any questions or discussions on this one? All right. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay.
We need to read it.
Oh, we do need to read it, don't we? Okay.
It's an ordinance, the City of Independence, Kenton County, Kentucky, amending ordinance number 2025-0-07, which enacts a Personnel and Pay Classification Plan pursuant to KRS 8380703. As the mayor indicated, in the back, you can see the only change is changing the name and the Parks and Rec from facilitator to Parks and Rec Director with a new minimum and maximum salary.
All right. Thank you, sir. Did you hear anything there that makes you rescind your motion?
No.
No? That was, that was what you intended, the motion to approve?
Yes.
All right. So, I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Franzen. And I'm sorry, did I have a second?
Second, I missed.
Got a second from Councilmember Vogelpohl? All right. Any other discussion? Roll call, vote please. Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mr. Vogelpohl?
Yes.
Mr. Waite?
Yes.
Mr. Stephan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Brinker?
Yes.
All right. And motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. This is exciting. This is effectively a promotion for our own Erin Cope, who has just done such an outstanding job in this role over the last couple of years. We'll see an example of it Friday that we'll talk about later, but, so, yes, very excited, very happy to have Erin in the role she is in, and happy to, this well-deserved promotion, and hopefully she makes Independence her home for a very long time. All right. That concludes our old business. Moving on to items of new business, we do have two items. The first one is proposed ordinance regarding a map amendment for Freedom Park development. Council, you have the information from the Planning Commission, a sort of other information in your packet. In addition, we have Mr. Dave Knoll here to, if anybody has any questions for the developer. With that, I will hand it off to council. Actually, why don't we go ahead and get that reading, because we know I am prone to forget?
It's an ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Independence County of Kenton, Kentucky to change the described area of 43.25 acres located in the terminus of Freedom Trail, east of Wilson Road, between Shaw Road to the north and Bramlett Road to the south, approximately 1,800 feet north of Bramlett Road in Independence, from RCVS, which is the residential conventional subdivision zone, to RCPS, which is the residential compact subdivision zone. This was recommended by Kenton County Planning Staff, as well as recommended by the Kenton County Planning Commission based on a public hearing held on September 4th, 2025. There are a few conditions that were a part of the recommendation of Kenton County that I would, that we have included in this first reading. You can see those enumerated, one through four. One is that there's a maximum of 126 family lots. Two, the concept plan submitted becomes a binding development plan that will only have to come back before the Planning Commission if there are major changes. Three, that there's a 200-foot-wide conservation easement along the creek. And four, that heavy equipment will enter off of Wilson Road.
I think, Mr. McCrory, did you want to say anything about this one, or? I know that one of the, a distinction worth noting is this, you know, this is the extension of Freedom Park. This, this development has been approved for many, many years. This is just a fairly arguably modest change to development. It's, it's, right now, we've got 126 lots. It's already approved for 100 and.
I think 116.
Roughly 106, maybe.
Okay.
We'll probably lose in pots anyway, because when we do our engineering land development, we probably have to pull something back.
Okay. So, I just want to get that out there is, I know anytime we have new development, there's, there's concerns, but the reality of is, this, this has been approved for decades. Development here has been approved for decades. This is just a relatively minor change to what is approved. And it allows for, on the, on the upside, it allows for a new product type that we don't have here in Independence. One of the things we talk about a lot is that we don't have, you know, folks will say when their kids move out and they're ready to downsize, is the only way you can downsize in Independence is to move out of Independence. We're starting to see more and more options that people can stay in the city, so it is, it is good to have that. So, with that, council, any questions or?
I just have a couple.
Okay.
I must go.
Go ahead.
This is going to be a development with an HOA.
Correct.
Yeah, currently, there's no HOA in Freedom Park, but this, this new section will have an HOA.
This section will have an HOA?
Yes.
And it will be grass is cut?
I'm sorry, Mr. Knoll, if you could hold that microphone up, it's got to be close to here, lean in, yeah.
Yes, I might start singing. Yeah, so it'll have an HOA. Currently, there's no HOA in the existing neighborhood.
But it won't, it won't force the people to Freedom Trail.
No, can't do that, no. We wouldn't do that, no.
And it'll be, it's a patio type, patio home type development where the grass will be cut, the.
So, it's a combination. So, 40 of the lots are dedicated, roughly 40, again, engineering may add or subtract one or two, will be dedicated to that patio home product, which is a single floor. It'll, they'll have basements as needed, because we just, the topography just demands that you have them. They probably won't even have the opportunity for slabs. And those patio homes that are, they're not restricted to, but they're, they're marketed to 55 and up folks, just the design, the fact that the lots are the size they are, and it will have the HOA, that part of the HOA will take care of the maintenance on the outside. And they'll have strict guidelines on, you know, obviously, you know, similar to what you might have for zoning restrictions when it comes to, to taking care of your property, probably a little bit more aggressive when it comes to the HOA, but the yards will be taken care of, that kind of thing, yeah.
And I got an email from a citizen that's concerned about an additional exit, but I was under the understanding there already is going to be an additional exit onto Wilson Road.
In, in the 2005 plan originally, which was, you know, this was, I think originally maybe more like 60 or 70 acres from the existing Freedom Park, there was always an exit planned on Wilson Road. So, the bridge over the creek is already platted, is a right-of-way already dedicated to that. We're just continuing what was approved as far as the road goes. We're, we're continuing what was approved in 2004.
So, there will be an initial exit off of Wilson?
Yes.
Okay. And then they did ask for a no-through traffic sign, but that would be more us than them.
You say a traffic?
Well, they're, they're requesting a no-through traffic sign on Freedom Trail itself, but that wouldn't be something that you would be responsible for. It'd be something we'd be responsible for.
Yeah, it's a public road.
They've requested that, so I'm just putting that on y'all's radar. And that's all I had.
So, my question, full disclosure, I live in Freedom Park. Question I have is, there's a lot of concerns that I've heard have to do with the traffic increase and it being a cut through. Personally, I don't see it as a cut through, because there's really nothing to cut through to down on Wilson Road. However, that is a concern. My question is, and, and, the question I have is, with the bridge construction, is that the first thing you build or the last thing you build?
It'll, it'll be one of the first things. So, yeah, it'll, it'll be getting, gotten out of the way quickly. Yeah. So, crossing the creek at Wilson Road, a small creek there, and crossing the creek at the Freedom Park extension or Freedom Trail would be one of the first things to be done, correct?
Why is that? And is there a reason that you could, and just to address, I think, some of the neighborhood traffic concerns, is there a reason that that could not be done last, so that all, all the traffic is assured to come in off of Wilson while you're developing?
From a development perspective is the main reason. So, our, the sewer, for one, is the biggest reason, is along the creek. That's where we're getting the sewer. So, when we were, when we first, again, this is a different group of people, I'm one-fourth of both groups, basically. And so, originally, when we went down Freedom Trail, extended Freedom Trail, if we kept ongoing, that's how the natural development would have occurred, because that's how the utilities are, that's where the utilities are and how they will continue. It wouldn't make sense from that perspective to do it. Additionally, you know, one of our main builders is Fisher Homes, and so, that's also something that just from their, you know, marketing and economics and just the only, the way to get it done is to do it from that point on. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of other things. I mean, yeah, I guess you could technically do it, but we're talking, is it, it's really just a matter of, you know, which comes first. I mean, you know, it's, say, we're going to be there three or four years, and Fisher's pretty, you know how, they're very active in Independence, they're, they get things done pretty quickly. And so, you know, you're talking three or four years, and maybe you're, I know what you're saying, like, you might mitigate that traffic for a certain portion of that time, to get on the front end or the back end. And I'm just saying that from that perspective, also from the earth-moving perspective, you know, to try and minimize the impact as far as trying not to, we don't want to take any dirt out of the neighborhood, we don't want to bring any in. So, we don't want trucks going everywhere, and the best way to do that is to start from that ridge and work our way back toward the lower ground.
Okay. So, to that point, one of the conditions is heavy equipment entering off of Wilson Road. What is considered heavy equipment?
So, this is, this again goes back to 2004, when I was not in this building, I don't know where I was, I think the bank, maybe. I don't know where we were. Maybe it was the courthouse, I forget.
It wasn't the courthouse.
The, the part of the ordinance there, and I think it's denoted that it's for, there's a line in there that says for development. So, we're talking about the big, giant, heavy stuff, big truck. So we're talking about the big, giant, heavy stuff, big trucks, the pans, you know, the big earth movers and that kind of thing would come off of Wilson Road, so that we're not coming through with those big lowboys, those big tractor-trailer type things, it would not be coming through the neighborhood. That's the way that ordinance was written, and that's what we're adhering to, yes.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all I have right now.
Bridge is too long?
The bridge? Inside of Freedom Park, it'll be a subdivision regulation, so it'll be 50 or 60 feet, depending on. So we're having a traffic study done, we're actually meeting this Wednesday, I'm not sure, are you involved in that city-wise, or?
PDS.
Is the city involved in that? I didn't know. So we're meeting with PDS.
Our engineer, city engineer.
City engineer, county engineer, so Marty Hellman, and then our engineer, Rob Keller, the Kenton County engineer, because Wilson Road's a county road, so they're going to be involved in this. We're doing a traffic study, and then that'll determine how big that main road is. Is it going to be a 60-foot right-of-way or a 50-foot right-of-way? That's all up to those mathematicians and engineers to figure out.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
I don't see it really being a problem of being a cut through. That's a lot of stop signs.
That's a lot of stop signs, yeah.
If you're on the back end, yeah, maybe you want to get out, you know, but I agree with you, it's a lot of this, yeah.
Yeah, I have trouble imagining anybody but Freedom Park residents using it in either direction. All right. Any other discussion among council? All right, this is just the first reading, so we will go ahead and move on to our next item of business, and that is a proposed ordinance for a tax amendment pertaining to ADUs. We started discussing this a few months ago. This is the accessory dwelling units. And, yeah, we've got an ordinance drafted, it's gone through the Planning Commission, we have recommendations from Planning Commission, all included in your packet, and Attorney Gatlin, if you would be so kind.
It's an ordinance submitting the City of Independence zoning code revising which residential zones list accessory dwelling units, ADUs, as permitted or conditional uses, and requiring all ADUs to meet residential character standards. This was, as the mayor indicated, in front of the Kenton County Planning Commission, where it was recommended at the September 4th, 2025 meeting. Attached to this ordinance and incorporated therein is the Attachment A, which would indicate that accessory dwelling units will become a conditional use in the large lot subdivision of the residential zone, and they are no longer permitted or conditional in the residential CBS, residential CPS, residential M or residential M zones. So they will only now be allowed as conditional uses in the RLLS, which would then require them to go in front of the Board of Adjustments for a conditional use permit.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or discussions on this one? Okay. All right. If there are none, we will move on. That concludes our business for this evening. We'll move on to reports. Attorney Gatlin, have you anything to report?
Nothing, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Morcony?
Well, I'm happy to report, you've probably seen the ever-evasive turn lane is happening on Madison Pike. So I'm glad to see that progress is being made. Like I discussed before, if you're heading north or south on Madison Pike in front of Centennial and Richard Wayne Scott, we, the city, are adding a turn lane to free up traffic, gets a little congested there at certain times of day. The contractor, Eaton Asphalt, is working at night only to close the road, but they are doing some work during the daytime, pouring cement off to the sides. It'll give us sidewalk connectivity, that missing gap there by Walnut Hall to the Starbucks Coffee. So everything's progressing, and on that front, the splash pad area was excavated today, they just started on it, getting it ready for the retaining wall. So that's all I have.
Start to take shape?
Yeah.
All right, thanks, sir.
Sure.
I have a few items. First off, I wanted to recognize Councilmember Wade. Councilmember Wade here, a couple of weeks ago completed his Level III Master of City Governance certification through the Kentucky League of Cities. That's a big deal. That is, that is completion of 90 hours of courses, yeah, so not, not something that you just send in an application and get. So, yes, congratulations, sir. If you don't mind, I'm going to start calling you for advice on things. I do not have that.
I have hourly fee.
Well, you approve the budget, so. All right. Also, also want to recognize the city in general, our Parks and Recreation Department in particular. We just got word late Friday that the City of Independence has been awarded the Parks and Recreation Department of the Year through the Kentucky Recreation and Parks Society. You may recall, we won that last year for the first time, and now this is a second year in the road that, in a row that we have won that. In addition, we are being awarded the, our Christmas walk is being awarded the Program of the Year. So great accolades there, just a credit to the wonderful programming we have, and we talked about in our staff meeting this morning, and of course, our, you know, as of, as of this, a few minutes ago, our Parks and Recreation Director, Erin Cope, has said in the meeting, and rightfully, she deserves a ton of credit for these, and, but the reality of it is, these events are, it's all hands on this one, and, you know, it's certainly among city staff, but also council members and a myriad of volunteers, some of whom are sitting out here now. So it's quite a credit to everybody. This truly is an award for the city and a lot of people that are involved. In addition to the two recognitions to the city on this one, Independence' own, Juan Holland, is receiving a special citation for their support of our recreation programs, which of course include, for years, they have been the title sponsor of fireworks, which is, is no, no small amount on that one, as well as a myriad of other programs that they continue to step up. Our parties, when we wanted to grow our parties at the park, they stepped up to work with Hand in Hand Realty and become a co-sponsor so we could have more, you know, I know they've just kind of got to be our go-to on so many levels, so a well-deserved award on that. That award will be given next month, on November 12th, or those awards, at a banquet at General Butler State Park down in Carrollton, so looking forward to that one, but certainly kudos to everybody involved on that. And then last, speaking of our great programs, this is another one that may win the, win that recognition down the road here. This is only the second annual booze and brews coming up on this Friday, and if you weren't there last, last year, be sure to make it this. This has turned out to be a spectacular event. Erin came up with this idea, started working with various community groups, and we had a great time last year, and it's, and it's, it's shaping up to be even better this year. Let me see here, we've got, of course, it's something for everybody, we've got the trunk-or-treat event. Trunk-treating will be going on down in the lot by the basketball courts. My understanding is we've got double the participants we had last year on that, so there's something for the kids, show up in costumes, do some early trick-or-treating, practice up for the big day. And then we've got, we've got the haunted trail for the kids and for the adults. Many of you remember the, our FOP Lodge sponsored the haunted trail many years ago, they revived that last year for this event, so that will be going on in the woods next to the park, if you dare. Looking forward to that one as well. We will have Barley Corns, we'll have their, their beer truck here with their wonderful craft beer, we will have food trucks here, you have the option, just like at the parties of the park, you can bring your own cooler with whatever you choose in it, as long as it's, you know, legal. But bring that along, and, and then I think at about seven, eight o'clock, seven o'clock?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, eight o'clock, we have a great band playing at the amphitheater. We, we had Fev last year, it was a great time, but this year, this year, it's a big deal, we have Doghouse. Doghouse will be at the Donna Jaeger Amphitheater on Friday night.
That is scary.
Yeah. There were discussions in the staff meeting about whether or not the band should dress up for a Halloween event, so council, maybe just a little straw poll, show of hands, who thinks maybe they should dress up?
Like the Village Beach or something?
Oh, yes!
Oh, I like that. I like that. All right.
Yes.
Justin, that doesn't count.
Well, I know you already signed the, the contract, I'm sure, but...
Well, I have nothing, I, there's no money involved for me.
I know, I know. Very much appreciated. No, it's going to be a great night, it was a spectacular time last year, the weather is going to feel fall-like but comfortable, I think we had a high of 70 maybe on Friday, great weather, it's just, it's going to be a great day to be out. It was a, it was just a wonderful event last year, for a first year, I couldn't believe how well it went off, so high hopes for this year. So please, come out Friday night, we're going to have a lot of fun here, right behind us here in Memorial Park. Looking forward to that, that is all I have. Any need for executive session, sir?
None, Mayor.
All right, do I have anything from council? Well, in that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Franzen, second from Councilmember Wade. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned, thank you.